How about you?
Good evening. How are you guys doing?
Okay.
Hello?
To go to the.
No.
Well, it goes to the actual item. I think that's great. I just wondered.
Oh, you're talking about on Civic Clerk?
Yeah, it's like the, you know, there's the agenda and you can just get right to an item. I, you know, they used to do that with the city council and it was great when you didn't want to thumb through nine hundred pages of irrelevant stuff. So I like how we have that. I was just curious if we could somehow get counsel to do that, too.
Yes, we all heard the, the comment and the concern about the five hundred pages of emergency management planning.
Dylan, did you see that some of the guests, their two inquiries in the chat?
Okay, I, I think they're just wondering if they're in the right place. They think probably that they're supposed to be over here as a panelist at this point, but they're just in the attendees section and will be pulled over when the time comes.
Yeah, okay, well, it's, it is time, so I guess we should call the meeting to order. This is the January thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, meeting of the Manitou Springs Planning Commission. And the first item of business is approval of the minutes of the December ninth meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of the December ninth meeting.
Is there a second?
I can second that.
Okay, any discussion? I mean, all in favor, just raise your hand.
And I'm abstaining because I wasn't there.
Sure.
And.
Julia, were you, were you there? No, so you would.
I.
Stay as well.
I wasn't participating in the conversation, in the discussion.
Okay, and then David, I can't see David.
Yeah, he's missing in action.
There he is, there he is.
Were you at the last meeting, David? You're muted.
Yes, I was. Did you ask for approval of the minutes?
Yes, right, so we're waiting. Okay, so that's one, two, three, four, five, four. Four in favor and two abstentions. All that carries. Next, we'll go into new business and I'll describe the process we use for the benefit of the people in the audience. We start by. I'll call an item for consideration and planning staff will describe what the request was, what their, their understanding is and what their findings are, what their recommendations are. And following that will allow the applicant to speak and state their case. And following that, we'll open the public hearing to the public to comment on the item. And at that point, the, the public can express their opinion on this specific item, whether they approve, disapprove, concerns they may have. And following that, we'll deliberate and we'll, we'll vote either to approve, not approve, possibly postpone our table, or possibly we'll modify the, the item, but we'll, as we're doing it, we'll be guided by our municipal code. We're not legislators. We're interpreting what's in the municipal code and we'll base our judgment on that. So that's the process and before we start, are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte contact that any commissioners need to disclose? Okay, I see none, none of that, so we'll move on. The first item of new business is variance twenty-one oh two, lot covered seventy percent where fifty percent is a maximum, two fifteen Pine Ridge Avenue, Larry Rice applicant.
So the applicant and staff are requesting postponement. There were some questions that Colorado Springs Utilities had and we just weren't sure how long it was going to take the applicant to get those addressed. And he has done that, but we had already elected to postpone the item. So he's planning on being at the February meeting.
Okay, is there a motion to postpone?
I move to postpone variants. There's an item that we're discussing right now. I'm sorry.
Twenty-one oh two.
Twenty-one, I've variance twenty-one oh two, to the next regular meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, and that's carries unanimously. I just realized, you know, one of the things I've proposed doing is when we have items that we think possibly will be postponed, we should move them up. And based on email we got a little while ago, I believe the item five, six, and seven are proposed to be postponed.
Yes, yes.
So I would suggest if someone could make a motion to, to modify the agenda to move those items for immediate consideration. So just so if anybody's sitting around wanting to know what happens there, they won't have to spend the whole time.
Go moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. So with that, I'll call up the next items of consideration or item five, six, and seven of variance twenty-one oh three, front yard setback, five nine, five feet, nine inches where fifteen is required, one oh six Washington Avenue. Mark Gill Land of Cornerstone Design Building applicant on behalf of Jason Rash owner. Item six, variance twenty-one oh four, side yard setback, two feet where seven six is required, same address and same applicant. And item seven, variance twenty-one oh five, rear yard setback, four feet where fifteen is required, one oh six Washington Avenue, same applicant.
So the applicant contacted staff and was asking questions about revising the application, maybe changing the orientation of the structure and staff advised that that kind of, of level of change needed to be provided so that staff could do a report and that I doubted that the commission would want to hear on kind of on the fly, those kinds of changes. So he agreed to ask for postponement tonight to the February meeting and he'll get me information this next week so that I can begin working with him on a revised proposal. So if you could postpone that to the February meeting, that would be great.
Okay, is there a motion?
I can make a motion to postponed variance twenty-one oh three, twenty-four, one oh four, twenty-one oh five and to the next meeting. And thank you, Michelle, for doing that.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. There's no discussion, then let's vote. If you approve, vote, raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Okay, so. Um, it looks to me like I don't see Jean here. We do have a alternate in the audience, so perhaps we should bring the alternate in for consideration of this next item. Gloria Latimer is. Okay, are you there, Gloria? I see you're muted and no, oh, there you are. Okay. So you're, you're part of the panel now. So now we'll move on to item three. This is rezoned twenty-one oh one, low density residential to general residential initial meeting, six El Paso Boulevard, Walter Harder of Six El Paso LLC applicant.
So the applicant is proposing rezoning from the current low density residential to general residential zone associated with the rezoning and redevelopment of this property will be a major development that currently has a height variance attached to that and a major subdivision with frontage variance requests that will be heard at subsequent meetings. The zoning ordinance lays out the process for the rezoning. This is a initial meeting, not a public hearing, although provisions are in the code that if you want to take and hear a public comment, you certainly can do that. The rezoning regulations also lay out what, what the criteria for rezoning is. In chapter eighteen oh five, it's public necessity, safety, general welfare, good zoning practice. So this property was formerly the Beverly Hills Motel. The buildings associated with that former commercial operation were removed several years ago and the ownership parcel straddles the boundary line between Manitou and Colorado Springs jurisdictions. Approximately about a third of the property is in Manitou Springs and then the balance is in Colorado Springs. The property is proposed for a coordinated development on, with both jurisdictions and a basically a townhome complex that is consistent across the entire property. Colorado Springs has reviewed and approved the development within its boundary. It was actually a, an administrative process with Colorado Springs, but there were a number of public meetings, neighborhood meetings that were required. And I know a lot of people on both sides of the jurisdictions participated in those. Replatting of the property. I'm sorry, rezoning of the property was recommended by the planning department not to allow additional density, but to fill facilitate the attached, single-family townhome style building form of the proposed development. So the current zoning allows detached, single-family homes and the rezoning is simply to allow that attached, single-family homes or the townhome type building form could be built there. Simply zoning the property to a zone that allows a higher density doesn't automatically mean that that density has to be approved. And that's not what is requested in the submitted development plan. So staff has provided some information regarding the existing low density residential. You could actually put up to eight dwelling units on the current property and the proposal is for six. Under general residential, you could actually put up to sixteen dwelling units, but again, the proposal, it remains the same for the six dwelling units. So staff has provided in the report, the criteria for a zone change items A through F and will provide a evaluation of each of those at, for the public hearing. An additional criteria that's not part of A through F, but is noted in the code is approval of a rezoning must abut on all or at least one side an existing district of the same general classification. So a residential district must, must abut another residential zone designation, not necessarily the same one, but, but one of a general residential class, classification and likewise with commercial has to, but a zoning classification of commercial. So the zoning immediately adjacent to this property on the northern and western sides is low density residential and therefore the proposal does comply with the proximity requirement of another zone, a residential zone district of a general classification. The general residential district has been recommended primarily due to the building form for the proposed development, as I noted. The application also notes the surrounding land uses and an existing variety of housing types in the area. Across El Paso Boulevard from this property is commercial zoning containing an existing campground, which also straddles Manitou and Colorado Springs jurisdictions. In a mobile home park with approximately forty-five dwelling units in less than three acres. To the west of the property at ten Via Maria Teresa is a motel converted to multifamily residential. And then general residential zoning is separated from Six El Paso by just one property, which is that converted motel on Via Maria Teresa. The general residential area contains townhome and apartment development in addition to single-family homes located in the general residential and low density residential zones. So staff has provided the zoning map, a section of that general area showing the property and zoning boundaries surround, of surrounding properties in the area at the end of the report. So as part of the application, the applicants have provided names and owners of the property. It's a single property and six El Paso LLC of which Mr. Harder is a principal member is, is the ownership. The legal description is noted in the staff report. It is currently an unplatted tract. And so that will also be one of the applications, as I noted earlier, for plating the property. The evidence of mailed notifications, the public notice provisions provided for this meeting, staff had noted previously and the public, the public notice, compliant public notice will need to be provided for the rezoning public hearing. At the writing of this report, there have been a lot of inquiries regarding the application. However, no comments were received at the writing. We have received numerous comments that have been provided by email earlier today and staff also has copies of these to reference. In case I need to do that. And also staff noted during the Colorado Springs process, which included information on the, on the entire project, the applicant engaged in, in the, the public and responded to comments. That resulted in a reduction of density by both sides from what the original thought process was for the property. So in, in this side is that Manitou Springs proposal is consistent with ultimately that, what was decided for Colorado Springs with the reduced density. Detailed explanation of the request. The applicant has provided a letter of explanation, which is attached to the report. And the required criteria are addressed in the narrative. Again, those are items A through G. Staff hasn't identified any concerns regarding compliance with the criteria based on the area and surrounding land use. Staff believes the proposal is appropriate for the property. Staff does note the application doesn't provide detail to support the assertions regarding items D and E in that above criteria and there'll need to be information provided during the major development plan process on those items. However, being more thorough for this application is recommended. And if the commission agrees, staff encourages asking the applicant to submit revised information that includes information, more detail on those items D and E that can be included in the staff report for the public hearing. Supporting documentation and maps, staff has provided, the application provides a description of the location of the property, but doesn't provide a specific rezoning map. Staff has asked for graphic and legal description of the property to be provided by the applicant surveyor for the public hearing. And also, so we can use that as an exhibit for the zoning ordinance, the rezoning ordinance, assuming approvals recommended. And staff has not required any additional supporting documents, but has included a vicinity map showing the part of the property that's in Manitou Springs that's being considered under this rezoning and the current config, configuration and location of that property for the commission's reference. Item six, public facilities and services impact report. The applicant's narrative states an environmental and fiscal impact report isn't required for a rezoning. We've run into this before. It appears to me that there's some confusion regarding the report required. A lot of people, and this is one reason we changed the title of that report, a lot of people thought we were talking about an EIS, environmental impact report or, or survey. And that's not what this talks about. And so we do want to get that report. It will have some applicability to this application since it is a new development for, you know, a, over an acre parcel. And so we do want to see that the public facilities and services impact report is provided and staff has recommended that that be requested for the public hearing. Or for, to be submitted so I can include that in the staff report for the public hearing. The citizen participation plan, staff didn't require a citizen participation plan and report for this application. There, it will be required for the major development. However, as noted, there have been public outreach and participation during the Colorado Springs review process and that information's been provided. A number of the commenters that you've received comments from have indicated their participation in that process. However, if that's something that the commission would like to have done for the, this rezoning, there's a couple of choices. You could go ahead and postpone this and have it come back at the next, next month as, as the initial meeting with that public participation plan. Or you could go ahead and take action, you know, set the public meeting on this at the end of this discussion and then require that citizen participate, participate, citizen participation plan, basically a neighborhood meeting be done on the rezoning prior to it coming back for the final public hearing and recommendation to council. In regard to uses, the following uses are permitted in the low density residential zone that specifies again, the detached, single-family residence, including accessory structures and private stables. In the general residential zone, staff has provide the zoning purposes, that zone district's purpose statement and also notice, noted that single-family detached and attached are allowed among some other accessory type uses and the private stables. And so that that's the reason for this request. So at this time, planning commission should hear any public comments and ask for additional information from planning staff. It may want to be provided for the public hearing or additional information from the applicant such as a revised narrative to provide more details regarding items D and E of the rezoning criteria, the graphic and legal depiction of the property for the rezoning ordinance and the public facilities and services impact report. I could add to that if you want to have a separate rezoning neighborhood meeting that you could add that as well. At the conclusion of this discussion, staff recommends the planning commission set the public hearing for the rezoning request at its February tenth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting to consider a formal recommendation to the city council. And I'm happy to try and answer questions.
Any questions? David, looks like you have your hand.
Yeah, Michelle, the map on page three, that just shows the Manitou portion of the property.
Yes.
And then, yeah, well, I don't know when the appropriate time is, but particularly if Colorado Springs has already approved their development plan, I'd sure like to see graphic representation of the entire project, including the Colorado Springs side, if that's something that is reasonable to ask for.
That's fine. Yeah, I can, I can certainly provide that. That shows you how the two properties relate and how the density and the, and the building form relates. So we can certainly provide that for the next meeting.
Tip, you need to unmute.
For some reason, Michelle, I feel as if I'm, when I read this today, I thought I'm really missing something. And so I'm kind of embarrassed to ask the question, but I was wondering if you could look with me on that map with yellow, red and orange. Do you know the map I'm referring to right after your recommendations?
The zoning map?
Yep. And if I understand it, this property is in yellow and wants to become orange. Is that right?
Yes.
So it says that where you have subject property, it says that we're supposed to see an abutment to the orange, which is what it wants to be.
So what the code says that it, it has to abut another residential zone district, not the same zone district necessarily, but another residential one. And it does.
Oh, you mean, just because it's, but, but is it, is it normal to have a property, an isolated property in one zone separated by, from the bulk of the other, from the other properties that are in the same zone district?
It's not unheard of. It's much like the small area of general residential that's just a property away. And, you know, though that area is surrounded by a much larger low density area. And with some of the high density residential zonings that you've done recently, those don't have any, they don't abut any other high density residential. So it's allowed in the code.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Mike?
Michelle, do you know when the major development in the height in the major subdivision, you know, is that scheduled for next month? Or do you know when that will be in front of us?
I believe that's on track for next month.
A tip.
A number of the, the letters expressed some anxiety about what they saw as forthcoming request for variances. So if we're making this kind of change, I guess that first of all, you know, the, to be granted a variance, you have to, you have to be in alignment with the requirements that we, that we ask for. Does, you know, in terms of changing the property, what impact would that have on, on variance requests?
Well, you're not considering variances under the rezoning and they, they have to make a case for, for any variances.
Why, why do so many people say, reference variances? Did they get variances from Colorado Springs?
I don't actually know that. I, I don't believe that they did. The applicant could probably answer that better. Since Colorado Springs, it was an entirely administrative process. I don't think that they can do variances, but they may have some administrative relief mechanisms that we don't have. And so there may have been some of that, you know, when it went through that, the process for that part of the property, but simply doing a rezoning doesn't guarantee. Like I had referenced, it doesn't guarantee maximum density and it doesn't guarantee. You know, that variances are going to be granted. They still have to meet the criteria in the code.
Yeah, because I guess that that's something that I would want the property owners and developers to think about that if you're talking about things like agglomerating habitations so that they actually are joined in duplexes rather than single, then it seems less likely that we would be interested in talking about variances that have to do with setbacks and, and whatnot, if you see what I mean. If we do this, we're actually giving, we're granting them the, the benefit of being able to have duplexes. So in some ways, I guess if I heard about a variance that would be about setbacks, I would be, I'm just saying that on the face of it, I would be less sympathetic to that going forward.
Yeah, and what's requested at this point, we've not had any application for any setback variances. We've had a request for height variance. Um, and I can't get into the reasoning or anything, but that's they, they, if that comes forward, that make, they have to make the case for that. And then the other variance would be for frontage, but that's not for setback. That's because only part of this property has frontage on El Paso. And there's a private road that'll go up into it to access the other units. So only one of the lots for the townhomes will actually have El Paso frontage. The rest of them are fronting along the private road or driveway, whatever you want to call it, internal to the, to the development. And so our code requires a certain frontage on a public street. So that's, the request would variance that.
I see. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Okay, um, oh, Julia?
I, and staff may not be able to speak to this, but I wanted to just ask casually if the public participation and our neighborhood meeting that was suggested as an option, if staff felt that, that would address some of the objections that we see in the packet. Or, and maybe that's just to leave that. Or, and maybe that's just to leave that out there. I, I, because it's for our consideration rather to require that, correct?
Right. Yeah, that's absolutely. You could certainly require that. And you know, staff's not opposed to that at all. That if that's something that would make everybody feel more comfortable. I think that some of the concerns I may have not seen the actual application and probably hadn't seen the, or definitely hadn't maybe seen the staff report explaining, because I think a lot of them had at least an element of concern was increased density. And that's not the case. Um, so you know, I think going through this process in some way helps with that, but certainly it doesn't hurt to, you know, talk to people about their other concerns, you know, and, and what all's been done. I, I know there was a lot of discussion through the Colorado Springs public, you know, the neighborhood meeting process about traffic and all of that. And I think that again, was one big reason that the initial density that was proposed on both sides of of the city limits line has gone down from what they originally thought that they were going to try and do.
And then follow up to that is if that were to be required, would, I guess this is a question for the applicant or, but would the public hearing have to be postponed? Because that's a a heavy lift for a developer, maybe February might be too soon. I don't know.
Yeah, that's something to probably talk to them about as long as we were able to get the information to provide in the staff report. You know, maybe a week or a week and a half before the meeting, just to be able to incorporate it. Probably wouldn't be doing a whole lot of evaluation of that, more of passing on. And we don't attend those public meetings or those neighborhood meetings. We expect the developer and the consultants to, to do those and you know, make them work and track what the issues and answers are and all of that. We don't want it to become about a staff Q and A. We want it to be a Q and A between the neighbors and, and the developer.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I have a few thoughts on this. Just one thing I want to make clear that people understand that besides density changes, going to general residential significantly reduces the required setbacks, especially the front and rear setback. And the other thing that, you know, you, you, Michelle, you made the assertion that just because they could have higher density, doesn't mean they will. But I, I would like, you know, is it a true statement that just because they propose only six units doesn't preclude the fact that this project could fall through or some other developer could take over the property? And if it was rezoned, then they could put 16 dwelling units on the property. There's nothing in the rezoning that ties the rights of the zone district to the project that is being proposed.
So in the code, it says you are not guaranteed the maximum density.
I understand that.
Right. So what the commission could do and what staff actually is probably going to propose in the actual report for the public hearing is that you have a condition on the rezoning that states that it won't accommodate more than six units unless it comes back and is approved through a development plan. You know, through planning commission and city council. And that, that way it protects, it protects you from having somebody just come back in and say, well, I'm going to build, you know, six, single, 16, single family houses or something. Not that you still wouldn't have development plan and probably replating to get a configuration for more units. But just as an extra backstop, I mean, if your real concern is additional density, and if that's the concern of the neighborhood, I think that that's an appropriate condition. And then it puts it on record.
It puts it on record for this development, but still someone else could come back and say, I bought this property. It's general residential. It's got a density that could allow 16 dwelling units. I want to put a couple of eight, eight plexes on the property and I have a right to do that. So basically, we are changing the rights of the property by rezoning.
No, no, you can put conditions on a rezoning that stay with the property, not with the development.
That say, this property, this 1.6 acres could never have more than six dwelling units on.
Unless approved subsequently by the city through a public process. I mean, we can't just, everybody has a right to come in and request whatever, you know, what they, what they want.
So the public process, the public process would be to get another commission or another council to say, yeah, it's general residential. Everybody knows that 16 dwell units. Sure, go for it.
Well, at that point, if the public process determines that additional density is okay, that could happen if this project goes down the tubes. That could happen by a subsequent developer coming in and asking for rezoning again. I mean, that's, uh, you know, there's, there's no way to say you can't ever request something, but you can put it on record that the, you know, the, the approval at this point is for six dwell, six dwelling units.
Kristi? Yeah, I would add to that, that, you know, this, what we're speaking to, of course, we're speaking about this specific property and this specific application that'll be coming back for a formal hearing. But I think this does tie into a bit much larger conversation in the community, which is how much housing do we have? Right? So there's a consistent discussion about we need more housing, we need more housing. But not here, but not here, but not here. And so, so certainly at some point in the future, it could be a political pressure on a council or that comes towards planning commission and a developer who's willing to, or interested in taking that on to meet that need in the community. They, they could change that, but that's why it is so important that, and I agree with Michelle's suggestion and think it's a really good consideration by this commission that some sort of condition be placed on it that runs with the property, but does allow for a future public process. For that exact reason, to deal with this discussion down the road that may occur about needing to increase housing in the community. So thank you. I just wanted to add that. That's been a, a big discussion as we've been talking about this and some other developments, you know, within the department. And how to balance current needs with future needs and so thank you.
Okay, just, I just have one more comment regarding the previous public process. It didn't really dwell on the Manitou portion. There's just sort of a, oh yeah, there's a couple over there, but that's Manitou. And there was no discussion about rezoning. And there, there was no dialogue. And so I'm kind of on the fence about whether we've followed the process, specifically the citizen participation. What I see in the application is very much rehashing of what was on the Colorado Springs proposal, which, you know, it has information, but it's not specific to what this item is. So that's just my other comment. So with that, I guess if there are no more questions for staff, it's time to bring the applicant over to talk.
Name and address, please.
Yeah, you need to unmute and if you could turn on your video, that would be nice, too. If you could.
Here we go.
Yep, we can hear you now. There you are. Okay, great.
Wow.
Hey, could you start by stating your, your name and address for the record?
Yep, my name is Walt Harder. I live at Woodmarland Road, Springs, 8096.
Okay. And your thoughts or what the floor is yours now for a few minutes, so.
All right, fair enough. Is it Delish?
Yes.
Mr. Delish? Yeah, I heard what you had to say and I, I, I want to emphatically agree with your thoughts on this. I, I would agree to a, an owner specific restriction to the six units that is, is being requested here. Per the current zoning standard of that property, we could build seven. We're requesting six. I agree and understand that the zoning requested allows for considerably more. The only reason for this request was at the behest of your staff as being perhaps the most efficient way of achieving the goal. And that's to build six units, three duplexes. We intend on building no more and will build no more. And, and would agree to any restrictions that you would like to impose that ensure that, period. Now, forever. Put a, put a sunset on it. Make it an owner specific approval. I, I won't convey the, if, if I were to convey the property that the, the rezone evaporates. Whatever you like. I think we need, and I apologize for the fact that we didn't provide the master plan for the entire project. There, this, this entire 4.66 acres will house a total of 18 units. That's it. The first developer that brought this to the table proposed nearly 60 in an apartment kind of complex. Because it had a commercial zoning. And we brought, I'm, I'm the second guy to the, to the trail here. We brought a proposal, I believe, for 32 or 29 units. It's, it's been morphing. And after public comment, discussion, consternation, et cetera, brought it down lower than, ultimately we landed at 18 units. So that's the total project, Colorado Springs and Manitou side. The Manitou side would hold six units. So we're, we're happy with any, any decision that lands us there. We think they fit in the neighborhood very well. And I invite any questions you have for me.
Okay, any questions for the applicant?
I want Alan. Mr. Harder, if we were to request a neighborhood rezoning meeting, how quickly could you pull that together? Is it possible to do that before the February 10th meeting?
I, I don't know. I, I guess so. I mean, we've, we've already had two meetings with, with the neighborhood. And the radius required for notification was in excess of your requirements, as I recall. And so all people on both the Manitou and Springs side were notified, attended, wonderful discussions were had and we completed those. If, if you wish to require more, we will do it in the most expeditious manner possible.
Okay, thank you. It seems as though there's still confusion about the density, the traffic issue, noise issue, lighting, things of that nature.
And Ms. Latimer, if I may add to that, I, I agree. I, I read those, those letters as well. And I think in, in big part, and I get this, it makes sense. Most of the people receiving that noticed gave us their knee jerk reaction to any development. Without fully understanding what we were requesting. And, and I think it's super, super important to understand that we are, we are, we, we hope to exercise a density less than is currently allowed. We, we will lock into that in any way, shape and form that you see fit. And the rezone, while it allows a larger density, is not the reason we're pursuing this. So again, any way you want to lock down that six units, that's all we're after. As Michelle was kind enough to point out, the, the reason for that is, is frontage, lot line frontages. And we've created an interior road in this development that will then access those sites. So we would not meet the interior, or excuse me, would not meet the, the main or the El Paso road frontage requirements. If we wanted to create some kind of crazy lots, we could conceivably go build seven homes in here. That's not our goal. It's, it's not our desire. Six is all we're after duplexes, three buildings, less structures on the site. And so I guess I, I want to reiterate that for, for the knowledge of those who, who wrote those letters. I, I read every one and I, and I get the concerns. We also performed a very extensive traffic study that evaluated the impact to El Paso. Our improvements along the street itself should, I think in large part, ameliorate many of those concerns. But I, we're, we're very happy to share that report with any and everyone who would like to see it. And I'll forward a copy to Michelle if she doesn't have one. To make sure people understand that, that we're, we're adding a very miniscule contribution, if you will, to El Paso.
Thank you. That's all I have, Alan.
Thanks. Anybody else? Mike?
Well, how, how well attended were those meetings? Just ballpark on how many people?
The first meeting started with, I would say roughly 50 people. We had it over at the church just south of Colorado and 30, 30ish, I can't, it's also a school. I apologize as I can't remember the exact venue. We had roughly 50 people within a half an hour, they had heard enough to, to relieve their concerns about a lot of what we're doing. And I would say probably 20 left. We had a wonderful discussion with 30 people.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Julia?
Yeah, I just wanted to know if the traffic study or any portion of the traffic study was presented to the public meeting that you held, the private public meeting?
I'm as soon as I don't remember. I'm sorry. It was made part of public knowledge through the Colorado Springs development website. Whether they reviewed it, I don't know. I, I don't, I don't think it was sent directly to the attendees or to all the the people to whom the letter was sent. But that was a major discussion, a, a, a big part of, of the concern everyone has. So, so the answer is I'm, I'm not sure, but I don't think so. And we can certainly make that available to, to any and everyone.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I, I just have one and, you know, I'm just curious, did you look at doing detached, single family on the Manitou portion?
No, I don't believe that was part of our initial consideration. Our, our goal was to to create a really attractive environment. I mean, anyone who's been there knows this is an exceptional piece of land with some extraordinary views. So our goal was not to cover as much of the ground as would be done with single family homes. And so by doing it with duplexes, we create homeownership and land ownership through the townhome regime, if you will, because now you own the land underneath the house. But we're not spreading out so much. So single family homes would have covered more of that land. I think erasing more of the view corridor and, and the beauty of, of the ground itself.
Thank you. Any more questions? Okay. Well, if we have more for you, we'll bring you back. I think now we'll open this up to the public. And before we start, you know, if someone wants to speak on this, raise your hand. And you know, as Michelle just explained, this is not the formal public hearing. That will be scheduled for next month or later, if we decide it should be next month. But right now we're just seeking in, information, asking questions. And if anybody in the audience has more questions for the applicant, now's the time to express it. Okay, so, okay, we have a hand now, I see. Can we bring, I guess? I see Alyssa Hanam there. I'm not sure. I see Alyssa Hanam there. I'm not sure who, who that is. Is that someone who was in the audience?
I am.
Pardon?
Yes, I am in the audience.
Okay, I was, I'm sorry, it's, okay, could you uh, state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Alyssa Hanam. I live at three Studio Place. Um, that is um, directly behind um, the Buffalo Lodge and the. Stables. And I must apologize, I think we had some confusion tonight. I think there were many neighbors who were hoping to attend and they were told. That this was not going to be on the agenda tonight.
Oh. Well, I, I'm not sure where they got that information, but. Um. The good news is that there will be a public hearing. In, you know, in the future, probably next month, and, and by the end of this discussion, we'll know when the public hearing will be. So that will be. Another time for the, uh, citizens to weigh in on this.
Perfect. I would just like to say that I think having a neighborhood meeting. Is a grand idea. I think there are a lot of um, neighbors who would like to hear more about. The traffic study. I was at that initial meeting a couple years ago at the church. I think there were well more than fifty people there. Um, and the traffic study was not presented at that time because it had not been done. Um, I think the development started off as twenty-one. Townhomes on the. Colorado Springs side. And then because there were some discrepancies with the right of way with the stables. They had to um. Redesign. The entrance and the placement of those townhomes, which is why that number was reduced. So um, I guess my question right now is, we have heard that there are. Um. That the developer has asked for some setbacks and exceptions. Is, and I heard from you that that's not true. Is that the case, that this is just for rezoning? That no setbacks will change and that there will be no regrading of the property?
No, I don't think um, what you said is true. The, um, the, it is true that no setbacks appear, appear to be requested. There is a front. Frontage variance. Request, and that's because of the narrowness of the property. There is a requirement that there should be ninety feet of frontage. I believe it is in Manitou for properties, and this doesn't. Have that frontage, so that would be one, one variance, but um, as far as grading. We haven't talked about that at all. I understand that there is a grading permit application. In for this property. I have no idea what that. What that constitutes, and actually, the, the hearing we're having. Is really focused on the rezoning. And, you know, in the future hearings, there will be the. You know, the formal rezoning hearing at the, at the commission, and then also it'll move on. To counsel for final approval, and then there will be a major development. Plan hearing. And um. And we'll have the, if there are variance requests of any kind, I guess the other one that was mentioned was a height variance. That would be another public hearing.
Okay, um, I, I am totally in favor of having a neighborhood meeting. So that we can hear a little bit more about the plans and maybe um. You know, we can, I, I think there are a lot of rumors flying around, and I would like to see the plans, hear about the plans.
Yeah, I think um, definitely if we have a neighborhood meeting. The focus of it will be the rezoning. And the grander plan, I'm sure that, you know, the developer may talk about that, but what we'll be addressing will be. The rezoning and how the rezoning impacts. Um, the situation.
And, yeah, and I think that would be great to, to educate the neighbors. Um, what I'm hearing from you is that the rezoning is not to increase density, it's. Only to allow what? Homes, connected homes rather than separate homes. Um, and that, you know, that, that sounds fine now, as long as it's not to increase density on that property. I think that would put. A lot of neighbors at ease.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask her a question, please?
Sure, Mike.
Um. Eliza, did you say that that public meeting was years ago?
Yeah, it was about two, two and a half years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, let's see, do we have? Anyone else? Um. We have another hand raised, a couple of hands raised, so can we bring someone else in now? Okay, it looks like we lost Gloria.
Sorry, the list changed on me as I was switching her over.
Hi, I don't know when to talk.
Okay, just a second, we need to get our Gloria back on the.
That's fine.
Hey, Maisy?
Okay, um, you can now uh, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Betty Lynn Mahaffey. I live at thirty-three Via Maria Teresa.
Okay, and you have the floor for two minutes or three minutes.
Oh, my gosh, I don't think I can fill that, but I did want to say something about the traffic study. Because I, I've been at all the meetings that there was any public notice about, so I was at that meeting, the first one. And I was at another meeting, I think where we discussed. The traffic study, but the traffic study. Seemed so flawed to me because. It was put out at a time, and if any of you live near the area, you'll remember when construction. Was happening on Pike's Peak and on Colorado. And El Paso was being torn up for water repairs. So the traffic was not typically what it would be. Um. At that time, it seemed as though the traffic study was perhaps not representative of what the concerns about traffic. Uh, had to do with. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And, and to clarify for me. So what we're saying is. A public meeting would just look at the rezoning at this point. Are we going to move it from commercial to high-density residential? Is that right?
No, it's to, it's to rezone it from. Low-density residential to general residential. And, and the assertion is the. The goal of this rezoning is to allow attached, single-family dwellings. Where other property only allows detached, single-family dwelling.
Get it? Okay. Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I do have another question.
Okay.
How, how will we be made aware of this? Because I didn't receive any kind of email or mailing. I heard about it from others. And I want to be sure I'm in the loop. How do I make sure of that?
Um. There were letters that went out. To, I believe it's five hundred feet that we required. So may you, I, you may be just out, outside of that. I don't know where your. Address actually sits. Um, but the property. Uh, is posted, it's advertised, it will be advertised again.
Great, thanks.
More letters will go out.
Okay, just wanted to know, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And definitely come back to the next meeting if you want to follow it.
I will, I appreciate what y'all are doing.
Okay, okay, it looks like we have another hand raised. Okay, now. Good to, uh, Bonnie, you need to unmute and then state your name and address for the record.
Is that better?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, uh, my name's Bonnie Barth, I live at two seven zero B on La Vista. Um, and I am just concerned about this rezoning because. If the purpose isn't to increase the density. Then there's some underlying reasons they're requesting a rezoning and. Um, if the purpose isn't to generate or put more properties on this. Piece of land, then I, I hope you won't approve the rezoning. Leave it as it is. If, if, if the rezoning of one oh seven, and they want to put six, and that seems to qualify. I don't know why we need to do the rezoning. I think the rezoning opens that property up for future problems. And I agree with the traffic study. I, I think when I read the traffic study, I thought this isn't the traffic that I experienced. On a day-to-day basis on that road. Not just for cars, but for pedestrians, bicyclists, people walking, you know.
Okay. Any questions for Bonnie? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I don't see any more hands raised. Um. Anybody else wants to speak? This is your last chance. It looks like we're done with that, so um. We'll close the public comment part of this, and now we're. Ready to decide where we go from here. Now, I think the tip, you need to unmute.
Thanks, Michelle, I had one more question for you. So. If we were going to be talking about with this, with the eventual development, if it proceeded. About any possible public improvements? That would be not under consideration now, but when we talk about the development plan, is that right?
Yes, development plan and, and major subdivision, either one or both of those would talk about public improvements.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, Heather. Uh, Mike?
Alan, you said earlier that if there was a public meeting, it would be limited to the rezoning?
Um, well, I, I, I guess. I guess I, I sort of misspoke. I, I think, you know, rather than. Being a public meeting to go over. In detail. The Colorado Springs part of the. Project, it would be focused more on. Um, the Manitou section, and I think what, what's in the code for rezoning is the. The, the need for a public meeting. So, you know, it's talking about rezoning, it's not talking about the major development, which could, you know, I guess they could combine. The, you know, talk about the major development and talk about the rezoning, but. Right now, what's under, on the table is the rezoning. And my concern is that. Uh, whatever we do. I don't want. Citizens to feel like we short-circuited or cut corners or didn't give them due process. So that, that would be. You know, reason I would support at least some. Some sort of a. You know, public meeting, uh, you know, a Zoom meeting or something, certainly not a in-person meeting right now.
People would have the right to. Ask and learn about the height variance in, in the whole scope of the project, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
There, so it would not be just limited to the rezone.
Oh, no, Michelle's raising her hand, so.
That's all, I just wanted to note that. Our expectation was, is that there would be a public neighborhood meeting. On the bulk of the applications, other than just the rezoning, and so I would think that they would do just to combine. Include the rezoning, um, because especially for those applications, the other ones to move forward in um, February. That needs to be done. And it was something that we talked about early on, um, and so hopefully the uh. Applicants consultants are planning to do that, but they, it would be our expectation that that is going to be done. Um, and certainly including the rezoning is, is not a bad idea at all.
For the public meeting?
Right, for the neighborhood meeting, yeah.
Okay, then, I would think we would. If we're going to have a neighborhood meeting. It would make sense to have that neighbor, neighborhood meeting happen before we have the rezoning public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
Just to have all that data. Available. So.
And, and we are not encouraged to attend those, is that correct?
I, I think my answer to that is yes, you are not encouraged. Uh, mainly because, and not that some planning commissioners haven't. Um, but you know, you all are supposed to learn about the project through this process. Um. And you'd have to be very careful about. Engaging in, you know, discussion that maybe wouldn't be. Uh, the best thing for you to then come and sit as a planning commissioner.
Okay. So um. I wonder if we should. Bring the applicant back for a second, just to talk about. Timing for this public meeting and. If they're still comfortable with scheduling the public hearing for February. All right, Walt, could you unmute and just state your name and address for the record once again?
It's Walt again at One Marland. Um, yeah, we're happy to have the public meeting to cover all topics as, as soon as possible. What, what are the notification requirements, Michelle? How, can we, do we have time to? Get that out, or do we, do we do it by electronics or something, or what?
Well, uh, there has to be a pub, the notification, you know, the mailed notice. Uh, that needs to be sent out with the mailing certificates and, and all of that, and that's going to need to be done, um, well, soon, and. Uh, probably even sooner, so that you could get like a Zoom meeting scheduled for the neighborhood. And include that in that letter, you know, and give them like an email to contact you, you know, and that kind of thing, um. Certainly, if, if it's left on, uh, anticipated for the February meeting. And you all just haven't been able to pull it together and, and get everything done and in. Um, at the February uh, planning commission meeting, it could be postponed till March. I know that's not what you want, but I'm just saying. You know, worst-case scenario, it's not like if you don't appear in February. You know, everything falls off the cliff, so.
Let's, let's walk through the dates together real quick, then, if, um, yeah, I mean, it's the same list we already mailed to, right?
Right.
Okay, so assuming that's reproducible pretty on short notice, which I think it would be. Uh, if we were to send that out this week, no later than Friday. Um, they would need to provide us with their email address, and then we could schedule that meeting electronically. Uh, pretty quick. Wha- what are your expectations with regards to notice? And, and do you feel like we can meet those deadlines to, um, to have that meeting in time?
Technically, there is no notice requirement that we have. For the neighborhood meeting. I mean, you want to do something that. Actually gets you some attendance. You don't want to send a notice out and then the next day have the meeting, so. I would think, you know, scheduling the meeting and having the date and information in the notice. Uh, you know, at least ten, you know, about ten days before you want to have the meeting. Is, is a good timeframe, and that you'll also be in plenty of notice. Uh, for the upcoming public hearings. So doing it all as one, one letter, give, you know, kind of. Uh. You know, deals with uh. Two things at once, and you would be more than compliant with our requirements for notice for the public hearing. Um. But I would plan on trying to schedule a meeting. Ten days or so after you, at. Either ten days or so after you've mailed it, or at least after you think they've received it, give them a couple of days. Um. That would be my recommendation to you.
Well, let's walk through that math together. Let's walk through that math together, just to make sure that we can, can do this and be compliant.
Sure.
Today's the 13th and, and I, and I can get these letters in the mail by the 15th, Friday. That's kind of fast.
Sure.
Then by the 25th, we could expect everyone who needs to receive these will have done so. And let me sketch these down, so 113. And then perhaps we have the Zoom meeting, not on the 10th day, but perhaps, you know, the 12th day. So we add 10 plus 2 and then have the meeting, the online meeting, if you will.
Right.
Would that, would that satisfy the, the requirements and the comfort zone of, of the commission?
Well, I, I would think it would because you would be meeting more than a 10-day, little bit more than a 10-day timeframe. Of course, they can weigh in on that. But then the other thing you all have to be aware of is we need a summary of that meeting, the, the issues that were brought up, the discussion, that has to be produced and sent to us so that we can include it in the staff report that would go to the public hearing. So that really would be, you know, would your, you know, and what, and it would need to include how you're addressing the issues. Maybe they're already addressed or, you know, there's some things that you're going to offer to address any issues. And so I think that probably is more of a question is if your consultants are going to be able to turn it around. Cause it, it can't come in, you know, a couple of days before the February 10th Planning Commission.
That was my next question. Okay, so the 10th. So let's, let's run through these numbers again together then. Okay, so today's the 13th. I, I get this out by the 15th. I had two days, takes me to the 27th, I'm having a meeting. And I'm able to compile a summary of the meeting within a couple of days. 30th, worst case, 30, thereabouts, and then get you that summary of, of the meeting. I've given you in a, a week or more to have that summary prior to the February 10th meetings. Does, does that feel comfortable?
I, I think that, that should work fine.
Okay, I would suggest just to get the reach of the people that are going to be writing letters or concerned. If you could also post it on Nextdoor.
Okay, yeah.
That would, you know, people seem to see the stuff there quite often that are, you know, maybe right outside the zone. And then, so that way we'll really get people's questions answered.
Is that, is that a normal requirement to do the?
It's not a requirement, that's just a recommendation for effective outreach. You know, we've done that a lot, just to.
Yep. And we can also help you with a, like a, a poster that you could put on the property saying neighborhood meeting.
Good.
Here's the information on that. I've done that before for applicants. So you just want to hit as many bases as you can, you know, reasonably.
Okay, so great. It looks like then we can go ahead and if someone wants to make a motion to schedule the public hearing for the 10th, I think we've done a lot of this for tonight.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I can second that.
Okay, well, we have a motion to schedule the public hearing for this rezoning on February 10th. Is there any discussion? Oh, Michelle?
I just wanted to clarify, make sure that that motion included the items listed in the staff report as requested from the applicant for the public hearing. And you may want to add and noting that they'll have a neighborhood meeting in time to get staff the summary by, say, February 1st.
Okay. So can we change that motion then?
Yeah, I'll, I'll accept that amendment.
Great.
Okay, so is there any discussion? Then let's vote. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. That's unanimous. Okay.
Right.
So everybody in the audience that's interested in this, it's definitely important to show up for the meeting next month on February 10th. And if you're interested in the public meeting, that should be posted. Let's move on. Next item of business, if I can find it. Front yard setback variance 2101, 12 feet, 6 inches, where 15 is required. Three Tulsa Road, Jason R. Yester applicant.
So this is requesting approval of a 12-foot, 6-inch setback. Not a 12-foot, 6-inch variance, where 15 feet is required. So the variance is actually two and a half feet. That would allow construction of a small 10 by 10-foot greenhouse on the property adjacent to the home at three Tulsa Road on the site plan that follows the staff report. Properties approximately 6,736 square feet in size. And that, I believe that includes the Tulsa right-of-way that was vacated to this property. Actually, that got completed earlier this year, or earlier last year. The original house at three Tulsa was built in 1919. The residence at Puma Path was constructed according to the El Paso County Assessor website in 1972. Interestingly, that structure was originally proved as a garage. However, at some point, under previous ownership, not this applicant, the garage became a second dwelling unit without any permitting or approval. So therefore, the current lot size is under what is required for two dwelling units under the current zone. That would be 8,500 and 756 square feet. The location of the proposed greenhouse is largely within the vacated right-of-way and is also approximately 12 feet below grade of Tulsa Road in a flat area created by retaining walls the applicant has built over the last three years or so. Staff notes that due to the small area of the proposed new construction, replating the property isn't required. The applicant will need to replat the property into legal, into a legal lot or lots, which includes the vacated right-of-way before any further construction is approved. Stat, the staff report provides the authorization information for the planning commission approval of variances. And the variance criteria are listed with staff's responses to them. The application states adherence to the code would cause a hardship because it would deny the applicant the proposed greenhouse. The application notes many other structures in the area that don't meet setbacks and some are closer to the street than the proposal. Garage is, I'm sorry, the, not the garage, the greenhouse is being placed in an area that has been terraced by the applicant, who has intended to use that terrace for, for this improvement. The property is quite long and narrow and features significant topography. So space for any accessory use or even small structures is difficult in regard to safe placement or meeting setbacks. Staff does not find the application and evaluation, or no, staff does find the application and evaluation provides sufficient justification to meet this criteria. Under nine, on number two, the application indicates the owner has worked with construction professionals and has concluded there's no other feasible location for the greenhouse. Based on the information in the application, it appears the building is sighted in close proximity to the existing garden and for optimum sunlight. It does not appear from the information that provided that the location of the small structure could be adjusted such that it would not require a variance or that, that the setback could be increased. Given that the roof of the structure will be below the road level, so the property, the actual development is not visible from Tulsa, it appears the proposal is reasonable. And staff finds the application provides sufficient justification to meet this criterion. Item number three, the application states denial of the variance would deny rights enjoyed by a majority of properties in the same zone and provides some photos of examples, including one of a greenhouse on Puma Path. Staff agrees that setbacks in the larger neighborhood and this area in particular are irregular. And there's a history of the city approving variances of differing degrees. This request may, may be one of the lesser proposals actually for the area. Staff finds the application provides sufficient justification and documentation to meet this criterion. Item four, the application simply restates the criteria but doesn't provide evaluation or justification. Staff isn't aware of any code violations or previously granted variance that resulted in this request. The applicant proposes to comply with the city's code through this variance. So staff finds there's sufficient justification to meet the criterion. Under item five, the application references the quality and code compliant conjecture, construction related to the proposed greenhouse to address reasonable protections being afforded other properties. Staff notes that regional protection for adjacent properties can also be provided through the public hearing process itself. The required mailed notice was sent to surrounding owners within 200 feet of the subject property. The property was posted and the request advertised as required by city code. Planning staff has received inquiries from residents and at the time of drafting of the report had not received any comments. At this point, we have gotten two comments that have been passed on to the commission. Ms. Bergy that provided the first comment actually updated staff after reviewing the staff report, sent an email, a very short email later to today that basically said that now that they had a full understanding, they had even less concerns and supported the variance, but did, you know, assume that it would be for a greenhouse and not any other proposed construction. And then there was some comments that were sent by another neighbor, Mr. Foster. Mr. Foster, I think, was confused and thought that the requested setback, the requested variance was for 12 feet, 6 inches with a two-foot, 6-inch setback. It's the other way around. So hopefully that is, clarifies that for him. And I think some of his comments were related to that much more severe setback. There were also some other comments about maybe some of the conditions on the property that aren't really pertinent to a variance request. He had made those comments to me verbally when I discussed with him last week. And actually, I've had the code enforcement officer go out and look at if there was anything that needed any enforcement action. And I don't have a report on that. Really, probably wouldn't be appropriate for me to report during this item anyway. But that's, that's taken care of through other mechanisms. So there haven't been any adverse or negative recommendations made by city departments or outside reviewing agencies. So staff finds that this criteria, criterion has been addressed by the application. Item six, the application states the materials used for the greenhouse construction are compatible with those found in the area and cites limited visibility of the building as a factor in limiting any adverse impacts on the neighborhood. Staff notes the retaining walls previously constructed in the area were also permitted an engineer. Staff agrees, given the location of the property and lack of visibility, that the character of the neighborhood will not be changed by the proposed construction. And there are no significant changes that would impact the physical or environmental conditions on this property or others. Staff finds the application meets the criteria. And number seven, the application states the proposal will not impede on views of, or property of others. The public safety and welfare is addressed by the construction of the building by professionals using quality materials and that the proposal ensures substantial justice by treating the applicant's property the same as other properties in the area. And so staff finds the application sufficiently addresses that criterion as well. Staff notes the proposed construction is under the square footage that triggers either a wildfire mitigation evaluation or any geologic hazards reporting. There's no flood plan on the property, so no need for a flood plain permit either. So based on the information provided and the above evaluation in the staff report, staff recommend, recommends approval of variance 2101 for a 12-foot, 6-inch front yard setback where 15 feet is required at three Tulsa Road. With the finding sufficient justification has been provided in the application and above evaluation to establish conformance with criterion one through seven as required by section 18.32030 point A of the Manatee Springs zoning code. Further, if the commission wants to address, in particular, Ms. Bergy's concern, you could put a condition on that can go unstated and still be accurate, that this variance is for the structure proposed and no expansion or change of, of the structure is allowed without first going back through the planning commission. So we would not want it to become, well, it's really too small to become much of anything but 10 by 10. But certainly if that's important to the commission and you want to address Ms. Bergy's concern, you could certainly put a, a condition on any approval. And that's glad to answer questions.
Any questions for staff? David?
It seems to me very straightforward, Michelle, and I would certainly vote to approve this. I'm just a little bit curious if there's a problem, if in the staff report it says it doesn't meet under the first criterion, it does not provide sufficient justification. And then at the end says all criterion, one through, the criteria one through seven are sufficiently met.
Well, that, it was a typo and so I've corrected that.
Okay, okay.
So, yeah. It's fine.
Hey, Mike, did you have a question?
So, Michelle, anything under 10 by 10 does not require a permit, is that true?
It, everything requires our permit, but it would not require a regional building permit.
Okay.
And it, but it, it does require a variance, even if it's under 100.
Yes, because secondary or accessory structures, we require them to be the 15-foot setback, not the 10-foot in the general residential zone that you can apply to, you know, the regular building, the front of the actual building. Intended was to push it back.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? Can I spring the applicant over? Okay, Jason, you could unmute and turn on your video if you like and state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, everyone, it's Jason Yester, three Tulsa Road, Manatee.
Okay, and the floor is yours. Your thought on the staff recommendations and?
Well, just, I think Michelle covered it fairly directly. Basically, the greenhouse is planned for directly next to my garden. So there's easily moving back of, you know, tomatoes and whatever I'm growing from inside to outdoors and, and shared, you know, workspace and, and tools and, and everything's organized in a, in a single space. And it's also being how the property is located is, it is the only spot where there is enough sunlight to do a project like this. I, I think the big thing that, that she did make clear also is, you know, I'm, I'm only two and a half, half feet beyond the, the code for setbacks. And that's actually only in, in one individual corner of, of the greenhouse. So it's, it's only probably, I don't know, seven or eight square feet total that are, that are actually past the setback. So it's, it's not very much of an impact at all. And also being below road level at Tulsa, there won't be any visual impact or harm or, or encroachment on views or, or how the neighbor feels at all. It's, it's just, it's a fairly straightforward setup. We are building it fairly sturdy with pressure-treated lumber and a small concrete footer to mount the lumber to, filling it with gravel inside to help with drainage. It's, but past that, it's, it's a fairly, you know, temporary style. you know, temporary style structure. And it's, that's, I don't know, is there any more questions past that?
Any questions for the applicant?
Jason, you have room to expand if you wanted to down the road on that, on that terrace?
No, no, there, there's no room. This, this is, so when I had planned this part of the property, I've, I've been owning this property for, shoot, I think since 2000. So 21 years about. This was actually planned when I bought the property, just to have a very small greenhouse right there. And it pretty much occupies the entire terrace as far as the, the flat area that I have access to.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and now I'll open the hearing to the public. If anybody would like to comment on this, just raise your hand. And it looks like we have Phil wants to speak. Okay, you can need to unmute your mic. Phil?
Yeah, hi, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you're, you're great.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so I'm.
Start by stating your name and address for the record.
Yep, I'm Phyllis R. I live at 48 Puma Path. So I am neighbor to this 3 Tulsa Road address, close neighbor. And what, what I'd like to say is myself and the neighbors I've talked to around here, we all support the project. We don't have any issues with it whatsoever. And, you know, wanted to relay that. Also, I glanced, I glanced over where, exactly where it was going. And I, I run the operations of a large general contractor here in town and don't see any structural issues, whether there are any concerns with constructability. So I just wanted to relay that to you. And that's it.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Yep, you're welcome.
Okay, anybody else in the audience, if you'd like to speak on this, raise your hand. And seeing no, no more hands raised, I'll close the public hearing and the public comment part of the hearing. And we're at the table. David?
I move approval of variance 2101.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? I mean, all in favor, raise your hand.
Could, could we add the condition that only a 10 by 10 greenhouse structure be built? David, would that be okay as a friendly amendment?
Well, is that, does that add anything, Michelle, from Manitou's point of view?
Well, I mean, it makes it clear. When push comes to shove, if somebody came in and got a variance, say to do a deck and then came back in and said, oh, we changed our mind in that area. We're going to put in addition to the house.
Okay.
We wouldn't approve that, but, but I think it does make it clear.
That's fine, Gloria, thank you.
Okay, and the secondor is okay with that too?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor, vote by raising your hand. That's unanimous. So this, this one is done. And with that, we move on to other business. Do you have anything, Michelle or Christine or anybody?
I don't.
Okay, and then next, notice of council action and updates.
Sure, so the vacation of right of way for a portion of Fairview Avenue was approved on first reading. And it is scheduled, I believe it's scheduled for this next week to do a second reading on that. And then the rezoning for 6 South Path was also approved on first reading and is scheduled on January 19th for second reading and, and final approval. And then the council did approve the mayor's signature on the minor subdivision that included the properties on Canyon Avenue that also had city property included in that replat. And also a approval of an encroachment license for the encroachment over the, the city property that we own along the creek there. If you all recall that discussion, so those of all are moving forward and should be completed soon.
Great, any questions for staff? Okay, so next item is German unless someone wants to stay here all night.
I want some cake.
Take tomorrow off, Michelle, call in sick.
I wish I could, but no, I actually wasn't feeling good yesterday, so I've already done that.
Oh, are you in the office, office or is that just a background you have?
No, that's my, that's the office.
Okay.
It's really scary, I know.
Stay in your office, wow.
Good Lord, that's a lot of files.
And that's only half of. Yeah, that's the only part of them.
That's only half.
This is why we need to expand into Memorial Hall.
That, that top row is the Armstrong file.
Oh, man.
Okay, well, with that, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good. Happy birthday.